I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Masters?
Yes.
And do you want to go ahead and call Tom? Dial left hand side top button.
Dial? Oh, this one right here?
See where it says dial on the screen?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is Lance Masters for Tom Pamlet.
Right here, Tom Pamlet here. How you doing Lance?
I'm pretty good, how are you?
I'm good.
Are you steering with one hand and talking on the phone with the other one or?
I just landed.
Okay.
I just took the dock and the dock just was off right now.
You hit the dock? Would it be easier if we called back in a couple minutes then so you can wrap it up or you're good?
Oh, we're good.
Okay. So. So we're here, we just opened the meeting, we have the pledge of allegiance, we're doing roll call now and it's on, it's your turn.
Councilmember Pamlet?
I'm here.
That it? All right. So are there any additions council to the agenda?
I don't have any. Tom, can you hear that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, did you have an addition to the agenda?
I don't have any additions to the agenda.
Tom, did you want to suggest that new law that prohibits driving a boat while speaking on a phone?
We're at the dock now, we're just trying to the dock, we're good to go.
All right, thank you. So council, we're here tonight based on your plan to receive applications for the vacancies on the city council. And you've received the packets that have all the applications. And what I'd suggest you do is just kind of approach this as a job application process. So these are the applicants, I would suggest that you kind of walk through each application. And then you may want to make some notations about specific questions. And if my memory serves me right, and Kathy would correct me, next Monday at 7:30?
Seven?
7:00 PM, or next Monday at 7:00 PM, you're going to hold the interviews with everybody who applied and try to make a decision. Did we get that right? Super. So, and then when you're, when we're finished with the review of the applications, and I mentioned to Lance, on that second panel in on the left, in from the right, in the kind of rose color, were two questions that people gave me earlier today, so I told them that I'd bring them to your attention. So when you get to the point of building questions, we can just write them down on the newsprint and then we can kind of go from there. Any questions? So your first applicant is Cindy Lee Baseman. So if you want to just kind of review her background, she's been a resident here for 22 years.
Hey, Tom, just for clarification, you do have copies of these, correct?
Yeah, I have all of them.
Okay, great, thank you.
So is everybody finished? Any questions that you would have of this candidate or anything that come to mind that we could consider when you design all the questions?
Well, I guess my question is maybe a broader question. Are we, is the intent to develop a set of questions that will be asked of every candidate? Or rather to develop a set of questions specific to each one of these applications as follow-ups?
That's a good question. What you want to focus on are questions that you can ask of all the candidates. So that will give you those standard questions that everybody gets answered and that can be helpful in your decision-making process. There may be, as we see in personnel interviews, there may be specific questions that somebody's application or interview triggers that just would apply to them. But you want to stay, you want to make sure that everybody gets asked those basic questions.
As you would in a job interview.
Yes, exactly.
I had, I've been kind of new, so I kind of looked at all of them and came up with questions that way, if that makes sense.
Sure.
And kind of, I guess some of the weeks ran a little bit, but that's kind of how I went, that was my strategy.
Yeah, and I did look through these in preparation for the meeting tonight as well. I look at, you know, several different options that we have for how to generate questions. Just for example, one option that I see would be that we take these same questions and for the ones where it's applicable, we would create some follow-up questions. So that might look something like, for question number two, which is describe your vision of the Cascade Locks community for the next decade, you might ask for a follow-up question that would be something like this. Your vision that you articulated for Cascade Locks for the next decade is that we acquire new families as well as new business to our community. Our budget will be balanced as well as a vibrant fire department will be operating. What role do you see the city playing in achieving those, that vision? As an op, as a follow-up to the question.
Sure.
So that there's an opportunity to expand on, you know, like some people have some ideas that are real specific. How do we get to that is the follow-up question for them. Whereas others have a vision that's less specific and they have an opportunity to be more specific as well as zero in on what role the city can play.
Exactly.
So that's one option I see, it's just trying to generate some follow-up questions to these.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point Lance, because you'll, each of the applicants is uniquely different and brings different things to the table, so you'll want to have the ability to ask them some follow-up questions. Okay, ready to move to the next one? The next is Glenda Groves. And Glenda is a resident of Cascade Locks and she's been here 52 years. Finished with this one?
I think this is an application that raises the issue of utility rates. And, but it also raises it in conjunction with partnering with the Port of Cascade Locks. And so, I mean, I certainly have some questions about the specifics of how that works. I'm not, like if you look back at the previous application with Mrs. Baseman, she doesn't mention that specifically, but if we gave her the opportunity to talk about utility rates as well, then that's, I think that's something to consider.
Right. How about you Eva?
I thought, well, not only this one, but a couple others, and, you know, trying to determine, you know, they mentioned, and a lot of people had mentioned that firing mess services were something that was a concern, our former people lead. And then balancing that without, within our money, so that our other services don't suffer. If I'm saying that right. So, you know, how do you determine what those levels are, what the community feels are those levels, or what we, you know, all together, we can let the city, the community.
So that's kind of, that's kind of an issue that gets into your vision and your priorities. And how do we get to balancing the allocation of funds on a priority basis? But making sure that everything that you want funded is in there. All right, Tom, do you have any questions?
Do I have any questions?
Right.
Um, I have questions. So, you know, to go over all the things, I have many questions on who you're heading right now.
Okay.
Questions that, like, that you ever come to ask? Yeah.
Okay, so Tom, when we get through all of the applications, we'll go to the developing of that standard list of questions. So next is Jeffrey Helfrich.
Okay.
And Jeffrey is, lives inside the city limits and he's been a resident a little over five years. Ready to move on? Tom, are you ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay, next is Randy Holmstrom. Randy lives inside the city limits and he's been a resident here for 31 years. Ready to move on?
Other than to say I, this is one where I would, I would want to give this person the opportunity to answer follow-up questions and to be more specific in some of the areas. Particularly with question number four, which is, what do you see as, what do you see as the most critical issues they should, they see in our community? But I have a similar follow-up question I would suggest for that, so we'll ask him.
All right, next is Gail Leboy?
Lewis.
Lewis. It's a W. And Gail is a resident of the city and has lived here 20 years. Any comments on this application?
Well, I think there's a note at the bottom about he's going to be out of state October 20th to 30th. So my question would be, would be, would we hold another interview session so that he could be here for that?
And I would assume Lance, we could also do it via phone.
That would be another option.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I'm not doing everybody, so.
Okay. Tom, any questions on this one?
Nope.
Next is William Logue, he's a resident of the city and he's been here 35 years. Any follow-up?
I don't know, there aren't a lot on here, can we actually pull a lot on? So I'm hoping that the follow-up questions could pull more information out, so.
Good. Tom, you ready to move on?
I just want, I can hear you real good, Tom. I can hear Lance real well, but he is talking a little loud, so maybe just, um.
Let me try and move on the phone.
I'll try to speak up here, Tom, I have a cold, so. There we go, so what I had, what I had said on that last one is that I thought, I was hoping that follow-up questions would pull a little bit more information out there because there was a little bit of vagueness in there and I'd like to hear more from him.
Okay. Here's a very good one, thanks.
Next is Brad Lorang and he's been, he is a resident of the city and been here six years, 11 months. Any follow-up questions here?
Nothing.
Ready to move on then?
Tom, are you ready to move on?
I am.
Next is Richard Randall, a resident of the city for 34 years. Any follow-up questions? Moving on, you have Cody Steelman. Is a resident of the city and lived here for 53 years. Any follow-up questions? Lance? All right, going on then to Mark Storm. Mark is a resident of the city and has lived here for four years. Ready to move on Eva? Tom, are you ready to move on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, next is Bobby Walker, a resident of the city and he's been here 44 years. Any follow-up questions, council?
This is an application that specific, mentioned a specific, a specific solution for our fire department, that is to hire a paramedic as well as shifting administrative duties and billing back to the city office. So I would want, I'd want to give this applicant the opportunity to explain how that would work as a follow-up.
So council, are you now ready to go to the development of the standard questions that you would ask of everyone?
I guess the, my question first would be, what are we going to do about Gail Lewis? And is it going to be a phone interview, are we going to have a separate meeting? So to me, if we, if we create a long list of questions, then we probably do want to have two sessions for those, which would make more sense with someone not being here for the 24th. If we create a shorter list of questions, you know, then maybe that's not an issue. But I would just wonder what you and Tom think about that.
My preference is I always like to be in the person again, but I don't mind coming to everyone, you know, another night in or something to get everybody in. What do you think Tom?
I don't have a problem with that, I would always help with big, big of the questions. If that's, if it takes a lot of questions to do that, or a few questions that are, that are nice, nice and fun questions. But I have no problem with pointing to another meeting if we have to, or another interview if necessary.
And you have 11 applications, so depending on the number of standardized questions and then the follow-up questions you may have, it may be realistic for you to decide tonight that you're going to interview one half of the group on the 24th and the other when Mr. Lewis returns.
Or before he leaves.
Or before he leaves, right.
Which would be my preference.
Yeah, okay, but that's possible too. Tom, would that make sense to you?
Senator, split two of them up?
Right.
Um, I didn't hear the date given toward that, did you, did you come up with the date toward that too?
It would be prior to the 20th. Is that what he said?
So the two meetings would happen fairly close, so the two interviews happen pretty close to each other.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I have a problem with that.
Kathy, what's the date that Mr. Lewis is gonna leave?
I think this is the twentieth, isn't it?
Yes.
So can we get four more people in two days?
Well, we'll have to see.
Well, my, my thought would be, since this is a change in the process that we established at the last meeting, that if we scheduled another session for, let's say, nineteenth, it's Wednesday, and then we open that up to anyone who would, who would want to come to that session and interview us. And then if it's just Mr. Lewis, then we just have the one, but hopefully we have at least a couple more.
Right, now I would think Lance, if you offered it, maybe five slots on the nineteenth and the other six on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
And whoever wanted to apply in being interviewed on the nineteenth could sign up to do that.
Right.
Will that work Kathy?
There's only one other thing to do, and then we're not gonna get off until eight o'clock on Wednesday.
So we'll be doing another later meeting, just like tonight. Which sounded like it fit more with Tom's schedule, being on the boat as well. I don't know if that's your schedule on Wednesday or not, Tom.
This, this next one's here, the on that is?
Yeah.
This one's there.
Yeah, that, that's out. I can, I can work the on that, on that Sunday meeting here and I can look around my schedule there, check if they're off.
What about this one's there? The nineteenth?
Oh yeah, yeah, this one, on that, on that Sunday, what is the date, today's Monday? On that, we've had Sunday evening.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't be here for the nineteenth?
Okay, you're saying this, you're saying this one to be this one. Yeah, I'm, I'm up there. I'm not back till the twenty-third.
But could you participate via telephone?
And what time was that date?
Eight-thirty?
At eight-thirty, on Wednesday?
Yes.
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
I'll tell the recording the energy process that, 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 um, lunch, or next Monday.
Yeah, we did talk about that on the twenty-fourth. And then we were just trying to come up with an alternate night and, you know, kinda one that was as close as possible, you know, so we can get some selections done. Unless if that's a bad time for us, only other time I can think would be the thirty-first, because that puts aside another week. And it's Halloween, yeah, sorry.
Well, we wear our costumes. So Tom, I think the issue is trying to get Mr. Lewis and anybody else who wanted to be interviewed this coming Wednesday at eight-thirty, prior to Mr. Lewis leaving town, and then do the balance on the twenty-fourth. And that would position you then after the twenty-fourth, and it could be the, is it the twenty-fourth? You could meet on the twenty-fourth and make your appointments. After you have the interviews.
That works.
Okay, so I think we have agreement to take that approach. So what have we for standard questions that everybody is gonna be asked? The two questions that I picked up today are, what would you do to help create economic development for the community? And two, what experience or ideas do you have to help solve some of our problems?
Well, on the second one, we've kind of done that, we just threw them out into two different questions already. Because one of them says, you know, it says, well, what skills do you bring? But does it say anything about experience?
Number three.
What skills, ideas, you know? And then the other one brings out the ideas. So I don't know.
And number three asks about experiences.
Yes.
So what standard questions do you want to ask everybody?
Well, I guess I go back to my original question, and I look at it as there's, there's four basic options that I see, and then it could be any combination of those options that we choose. First would be that we ask the same questions. And give them the opportunity to expand on answers. Someone gave longer answers already, someone gave shorter answers. But that would be, that would be my thought, was we'd have, we could just, we could stick with the same questions, but just re-ask them and give them the chance, let them know this is an opportunity to, to expand. Another option would be that we create a set of follow-up questions, to the extent that it makes sense, for each one of these questions, with the idea of referencing their previous answer and then asking them something more, more, more specific or more pertinent or so on. And then the third option would be that we come up with an entirely new set of questions. Not necessarily related to these questions at all. And then the fourth option I saw was that we just come up with some general, open-ended questions, just that, you know, I'm qualified for this because, and then fill in the blank, or the city council needs blank. Anything more that you would like us to know that wasn't in your application?
Right.
Those types of open-ended questions. So in my mind, we should, we should look at that, those type of formats and, and see if, which one fits best with what we have here.
Eva, how do you feel about it?
I follow what you say. There's two that would be my preferences. I like the idea of follow, creating follow-up questions for the ones that we already have. Actually, that's my favorite one. The next one would be new questions, although I think we've already got new questions, you know, so I guess my preference would be to create follow-up questions for whatever, what we already have. Or follow on those lines. What do you think, Tom?
Well, having looked at all, I went over a whole lot of these several times, trying to, trying to see if there was some, some type of flow to it. And I, I felt, I think, I felt there was some flow to, to some of them, not all of it, but through some of it. And I, I, I would like to see, and I tried to come up with, with some, to try to come up with a, a little more probably possibly, or something a little more specific. So it's, so it doesn't become just a general, just a general question. Because everybody on here, as I see, most everybody seems to have a pretty good grasp of where the city's been going, how it's been going. And it appears to me, pretty much also all of them have a lot of the same, um, concerns in that, um, the ability to have, um, town hall meetings, working this out, the ability to, um, or the need to take a look at emergency services, or even citywide services, and see how we seem to work financially. It seems like there's a lot of, there are a lot of things in here from the applications, but they, they grasp a lot of it. I hope to come up with some specific questions that might go beyond what we already have.
Well, Tom, and if I can, and Lance, if I pick this up wrong, let me know, but it would seem to me, your, your suggestion to use the questions on the application form as standard questions, and then when somebody gives an answer, then use your follow-up questions. Because you'll, that'll give you an opportunity to burrow in or to ask some probing questions about that.
Well, slightly different than that, given the assumption that they've already answered the standard questions by turning in the application.
Right.
So that there's no need for them to, you know, repeat back what they've already written. But rather, we can reference their answer.
Sure.
And ask for, ask for something more specific. Is that?
Yeah, and I think if you worked off of these questions, then there's no need to develop any kind of standard questions, because you're gonna probe off those standard questions that are on the application form. Does that make sense?
Well, for me, that, that's kinda where I'm, I'm coming on. I think we've, we've asked them some standard questions, and they, they've always, they've all gave some direction. I think the questions were good direction, were good questions. And I, and I think all of the applicants did a good job on, on understanding what the question was and, and giving a general way of what was a help. And it seems to me, a lot of them are, are close, are close together with, um, what they came up with answers on those, on those questions. So, so for me, I'd like to see us take those, how those people answer those questions, and then get a little deeper into that with our next question.
So the issue that if that's what you want to do as a group, is determine whether you want to draft those follow-up questions or, as the option to that, not draft them, but as you're sitting there talking with the individual, spinning off of these questions, do your probing questions?
Well, I, Go ahead, Tom. Yeah.
Yeah, um, um, for me, I don't have, I don't want to, I don't necessarily wanna promote and surprise, I don't have to surprise people. I want them to, um, um, think about, um, I would hope we could come up with some questions that would give them some thought, give them some thinking about it. And, and let them all over, you know, as soon as we can, let them all over and come in with the answers to actually know what those questions are. And let them all over and come in with them, but hopefully we've got, um, more specific questions that doesn't create a, a, I think of, of generally, I want us all to get together, I want us all to go along, or a lot of, um, to all work together. I wanna get something, hopefully something more specific than that, of how they're gonna, kind of, ask.
So Tom, if I, if I hear,
I don't really know, I just wanna think about it.
Correct.
Come, come with me, but we're all gonna get the same question.
So Tom, if I hear you correctly, you're in favor of developing those follow-up questions now?
Yes.
Okay, how does the rest of you feel?
Well, I, I think it would be a mistake for us to, to do anything but develop those now.
Yeah.
I think the, the idea that we, they would come in and then we would just, you know, come up with questions on the spot, I think that, that's,
We'll just kinda talk about that before we do a press release.
So, so I think you're all in agreement, so what would you like to have the follow-up questions look like?
I'm just gonna give that.
Yeah, I, that's where I, you know, I, I got these, I got, I got all this stuff figured out. So I've got time to look things over and try and get to feel where I feel, give a comment on them, and then, and then, and I've got some, I wanna have them specifically, I've got some gym rangers that maybe could help, type them up for you maybe, but, yeah, I've, I've got questions.
Let's hear them.
So, okay, so an example, and I'm gonna be just kinda heading all over, all over the board here, for the, um, I, I guess my question would be, I don't know if it's precise enough or tied enough, but lots of people, we need to get business in town, we need to increase business town, we need to get the city and port working together on this. So I, I guess a question would be, um, how does the city, how does the city, um, because also that's our part, how do we get with the ports and, and business in order to attract this, we get the delta on this, to do it? So that's, I wanna hear some people, the, the process of how the city would do that. Not, not that this is what we need to do, and that's our question, that was good, that was good to hear that. I think that's a lot of people. One question would be, okay, um, so how would we do that? How, how do you believe the city and the port should work together, like, you know, specifically, in order to attract more business? What is it the city can do in conjunction with the ports to attract this? So, so that's, that's a point, that's one question.
So Tom, what I wrote down was, how does the city get with the port to attract new business?
Exactly, so, so what is our responsibility along with the port? Because that's part of their job, part of their job too, that's their job, they, 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 but now how do we, so our side, how do we, what are, what are those things the city can do?
Okay.
In working with the ports to attract this? Because I think that was kind of the, that was kind of the themes from all, all others. That was all the themes I saw from all of it.
So I'll ask Eva and Lance to see if I captured your thought here. Did I get his thought?
The city's responsibility, yes. So you're kinda looking, are you looking for a definition? Or are you looking for, you know, the definition of what we, we already know? Or are you just trying to get their ideas on, get new ideas?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to get an idea of what they believe the city's respons, what the city can do. Exactly, how they, um, what the local party do, what the larger, what contest DCs do, what the things that the city are responsible for in, in planning and all that. What are the things that they can do in relation to the port to help attract, attract business? And do they have any ideas on that?
I think we've got that one, Tom.
Okay. So do I, I've got more, do you want them?
Yeah, I would, I would like to hear, I'd like to hear the questions you have.
Do you want, you wanna hear some more of them?
Yeah, why don't you go first and, and give your questions?
Okay, so I don't, I, I think, um, another example, um, there, there, as I look at it, as, as I was looking at what's happening here, mine was, well, I think I see it in the application a little bit, is I see two different groups of opinions in, in the city, and I think I see them a tiny little bit though too, that you have people with a progressive idea, that you wanna move ahead, we wanna grow, we wanna get things going. And that idea is, is our, lots of people, and that's kind of a hint about community too. But that's part of what happens when I get like that, is requires one, and you guys are coming up with, if you're gonna do these things, how do you fund those? And I, and I believe there's another opinion of smaller groups, of look at the money you have, check out what's on, really get involved with the money you got, and, and do the best you can. And what I'm saying is, I'm saying this is kind of an extreme of, of both, of both sides. And I think people are looking at now, how do we bring all those two things? Where do you hunker down and this is where we're at, or you, where do you grow? So those are what I'm trying to, trying to follow through with, um, questions. So I, I guess one of my, one of my questions would be, um, there's, part of this whole thing has to do with money, I guess. And so a question would be, the, the city runs several, has several departments that the city's involved in, and it ranges from this whole thing here, we wanna do something for seniors, we wanna do something for the EMS, we wanna do something for kids, we wanna do something for the town of parents. Those are things we all, we all wanna do. So part of my question is to, to the, to the applicants would be, how do you balance out the importance of all the things that the city wants to do and finance those things? How do you go about, one, what is your level of importance to those? And then two, how do you go about financing, financing those things? Because sometimes what I think what I, you have to hear a little bit is we, Because sometimes what I think what you have to hear a little bit is we attack one problem and we go forward on one problem. And what that does sometimes is creates issues for other things that we also want to do. So my question is, so I have a group of issues. We've got one problem in here, but that is, just that some of them have said it here, there is more than one issue. There are several issues. There's one that needs to be highlighted, but we should look at a lot. All of them, kind of a holistic, a path to things where figuring ourselves out here financially. So that'd be another question.
So, Tom, let me stop you there. I picked up two thoughts, and let's see if I captured that. What services do you feel are important? And the second question is, how do you propose we pay for them?
That's, that's it. But when I say what services are important, I think we should put down what the services are in town. So they know what the services are that we do.
Okay.
That we're already kind of doing. And yes, that sounds, and again, does somebody to help me tighten that up? Help me tighten up or forth, that's an appropriate question.
We can do that.
Do cover the other thing I'd like to do. I'd like to give them specifically what we're at.
Lance, Eva, how do you guys?
I'm not saying level. You know, I screw out there businesses and teenagers and EMS and kids and town peers. But I think, I think the follow-up question on that is some of the things the city already does. We budget for retrofit, we budget for water, sewer, we budget for recreation, we budget for streets. And same thing, I guess I would like to see a question that goes, how do you think we're doing on each one of those? Are each one of those elements of the city giving the kind of money they need or not? And if not, what levels do we need to take those to?
So you're asking for an individual opinion on what they think that there are services for?
Yeah.
And prioritizing them?
Right. Yeah, I would say prioritize. What I'm asking for is their thought on what they think, because we hear a lot of things out here, and other cities involved in several things. And I'd like to get a thought on where they believe we are with DNS financially, where they believe we are with power, where we are with streets, with water and all that. Because when we, eventually when this whole thing gets together and we all start working, we have to work on all of those. We can't, in this day, just take out one thing and say, we're going to fix this thing and now we're all good. We have to look at the whole package. So I'd like to have the people, the applicants, understand that there is a whole package in here and their thoughts on how to deal with that, from the financial end.
Okay. So you could ask something similar too. How well are we doing financially in delivering these services and what should we do differently?
Sure. And along with that, along with that, I guess part of my question, another would be a specific question, because of all of such of those, is if we are underfunding things that we want the city to receive, to all these different things, if we're underfunding them, I would like to have some ideas of how we are going to fund them. Are we, traditionally, traditionally we do these, we pass themselves or put a fee on or what I have. So part of my question is, if we are underfunding, do they have, what do we need to do, what will we need to take things from the sense of that, that we need to be honest with the people of, if we're actually doing these things, we need to come up with a thought, our philosophy of how we obtain those things financially? So I don't know if there's a question to give out there or not, but I think there's a belief for many communities that either we have plenty of money or we don't. And I'm trying to maybe come up with some kind of a question of how do they deal about it? Do they believe they have all the money they need and we don't need to go after anymore? Or do we need more money and we score after more? And how is your answer?
So Tom, how does this sound? If we are underfunding any of the services, what suggestions do you have to change that? Does that get after what-
That sounds pretty, yeah, that sounds pretty tight, yeah.
Okay. Eva, you got a question?
Well, there's a lot of thoughts in there. So I'm just trying to think of how you're going to condense it down to get the point that you wanted. I mean, if-
Do you think the ball, do you think the ball's down to that first of all? I don't know.
So are you saying you're wanting all four parts of that question or just all?
Well, hopefully get it, you know, I can't do a lot, but I'm hoping to get it down to something tight where it catches all four parts. You know, I may say five paragraphs or really what I want to get into, you know, we talk about five words.
Oh shoot, I was hoping we could do five pages. No, Tom, here's what we captured and tell us. And I do think this is not a question that is too long. This is a real critical question that he's raising. What services do you feel are important for the city to provide? And we can list those so people know what they are. Then the second part would be, how do you propose we pay for them? The third part would be, how well are we doing financially and what should be done differently? And then the fourth piece of it is, if we're underfunding any services, what suggestions do you have to change that? Now, that focuses a lot on one of the critical issues the city has, I think. Lance, what do you-
I might tell you a question. I might tell you a question.
I'd rather just listen to the rest of Tom's questions before I-
Okay. Go ahead, Tom.
The town hall meetings. I believe the town hall meetings, but what I've noticed, I've seen it in different places, you know, some of the issues that we have, they happen everywhere. I'm reading the papers up here in the five cities. And these cities up here are having a lot of same type of issues. And actually, they're trying to approach them in much the same way that the applicants here, why are we the applicants? It's amazing how a lot of their concerns and the direction the things they're looking at match a lot of these other cities up here in here and different places. But the town hall, people are all talking about them. Everybody's talking right now, how do we involve our citizenry into our governance? And the town hall is what a lot of people are talking about. Now, what I see sometimes is, this has been going on before, a lot of towns that have town halls, they're trying to work things on out here. It's sort of, sometimes it falls off. But there were, in this last election, part of my concern is, you have a town hall, in the last election we had, right around, in the recall, we had around 400 votes, very close to that. You get a town hall, 60 people show up. So you've got a fraction of what we're voting. And then those 50 may, well, three of those 50 may want to head in some direction. To me, to me, I still do have, and you start heading in that direction, you could possibly attach base to everything. And I've also seen in town halls, that we stay in the heading direction, but then one of the citizens will get out there, somebody else has a different idea, and they start getting someone a place with it. So my question to the people again would be, do the town halls, we want to do town halls, but how do we go beyond just because 15 or 100 people showed up? How do we get beyond all those ideas? How do we reach more people? How do we reach more of little ideas and drag out of people the citizens who are what they're really looking for here? Because sometimes I'm not sure that always happens just in a town hall. But we need to expand it somehow to get a better, you know, but again, sometimes we come out of it and you come in a direction, and then another group shows up and goes, wait a minute, what are you going to do, where are you going? We need to find, we need to get with those groups, those groups of people, citizens that do have different ideas and target them before we actually start making decisions, before they come in and to build touch base with them somehow. And that's, so my question to them is, how do you go beyond just when they're sitting in the town hall to reach more citizenry, get more of the ideas from, that are people that are kind of sitting on the bench? How do we find those people and get them involved, or not necessarily involved, how do we get their questions? How does it get to them? I mean, did you skip a chip for that?
Yeah, so here's what I picked up, Tom. So this is really, it's much broader than just town hall meetings, although that's a strategy. You're really talking about how do we involve the citizens in the day-to-day business of government in helping to solve the problems. So the first piece I had is, how should we involve our citizens in the issues that we all face? The second piece I have is, how do we arrive at consensus? So we have the meeting, now how are we all going to agree through some process to move forward together? Third piece I have is, how do we reach more people, get their ideas, and expand the involvement of the citizens? And the fourth piece I have is, how do we get people to meetings?
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Eva, Lance, did I get it?
I guess it stands a little bit, you know, the last one, and how do we get to meetings? I'm not necessarily, I don't necessarily need them to get to meetings. I need them to find, I believe, I need them to, how do we get them to talk to somebody who will talk to us? How do we, that's all I, they don't need to come to the meeting, I'm not kidding. I just want to figure out how to get their opinion, and if they have to come to the meetings, they can come to a representative, I don't know. I'm just, not everybody likes to come to meetings, but they still have an opinion.
Okay.
And that's kind of how they-
I don't think people have opinions here. So I added the opinion piece, Tom.
Okay. Yeah. All right.
So do you have any other questions that you developed?
Yeah.
Okay, well, they're sitting here waiting for you to throw yours out.
Okay. So the budget process, I think budget came up in a lot of things in here too. A lot of the applications were discussing budget. And I like their idea on kind of how the budget goes, how, how much oversight should the council have on budget? How hard should we be looking at budget to make sure that the money, that the citizens are helping put in all these different businesses? They're going to be, certainly I figure out, that if, being spent in a way, or being in a way that we want you to stand, or the budget in the way that we want, that we need to schedule. There's our budget process, since we go through, we have a council get together and make come up with an idea that we want to go for the next year. And then some of our budgets made that, made for that. And some of the things I've been on, it was kind of, we had light items, but it was still seemed pretty gentle. I'm just wondering, I'm wondering if those people are applicants or do without that budget, or do they believe there should be more oversight in the budget process? And it's another job, it's our responsibility to be more confidence about how all of them want to do that, or whether we should not have to worry about, you know, we have people who go out there and people who say we shouldn't do that, or oversee too much, or we should be pretty tight on the overseeing.
Okay.
So budget oversight, I think there's a question. How much budget oversight do we need?
So what I picked up out of that, Tom, were two elements. And one is, how should the city council do its oversight job? Should we do more or less? And then the second component is, how would you improve the budget process?
Okay. Sounds good. Another question I added, because I see it's also in, I've discovered in pretty communities, is we rely, because we're, you know, we're citizens of town, it's hard for us to know everything that's going on out there. How do we, should we, how do we go about challenging? I guess that's the word I kind of chewed out there. I don't know if that's the right word. But how do we, when we bring in experts, we bring in players, we bring in people who want to help us in a direction that we don't have the expertise in? How do we challenge what they're giving to us that it's really a wonderful thing for us or not? And that's, because sometimes what I see happen is, sometimes the experts give us ideas, and they give us ideas from someone else doing something else or whatever, and they're trying to apply it to whatever your community is, to whatever their knowledge is. And sometimes you're heading in the wrong direction because of that. You just don't have the background, so I don't know if this is the right kind of question there. But I do know that we have to use a series, a group of experts to, we're going to probably ask people to come in and do some things for us. And the deal is, how do you, my question is, how do they believe you need to approach these people, the people who are trying to help us do things, so that you're getting the right thing for your community, for your citizens? And not winding up heading in the direction that maybe somebody else is going, but really your citizens and partners. It's not the direction that you want to have.
Right, so what I picked up, Tom, I came up with this question. How do you think we should challenge experts to be sure we get a cascade block solution? You want one that fits here?
Certainly, thank you. Yeah, that works.
Okay. So that's really the fit question. Okay.
Yeah, that works. I'm going to go around here.
Hope he's stopped the vote already. So can we let Lance and Eva throw some out here then, Tom? Are you pretty much through with your list?
Yeah. I have some notes here. I've got books to go over, so I'll, I'll look over some other notes here. Thank you.
So Lance or Eva, do you guys want to go now? Or do you see these as fulfilling your requirements?
I guess there was one that was a little bit having to do with number three. And I had just written in general, you know, how do you think we can gain more widespread community involvement and visions that we have for cascade blocks? And I think that would be incorporated into that, is, you know, how do you get people's insight? And I don't know as far as being a separate question or just putting this out there, but Tom had mentioned, you know, how do you get people's opinions even if they're not there, you know, that kind of a thing? And I hear a lot of people say that they're following the will of the public. And, you know, a question that I kind of wanted to hear people talk about is, how do we- And, um, you know, how, a question that I kind of wanted to hear people talk about is how do we determine what the will of our public is, both individually and as a council?
So you could add that to this piece here. So we've already added what, how do you, you get that widespread involvement? And how do we determine the needs? Is that what you're asking?
How do we determine what the will of our public is? Um, you know, individually and as a council, um, you know, how, are we utilizing all the ways that we can to really know what the will of our public is?
Okay, so that should elicit some new ideas for you.
Yeah.
Any others, Eva?
Um, I had, I had some things and some people kind of threw some vague ideas out about council, but I kind of wanted to hear an opinion. What would make a, a, a successful city council from this city? You know, um, we do deal with kind of two different ideas in, in, in the city. So what kind of a council, in their opinion, would, what do they think would make a successful council for Cascade Locks? How do you bridge that gap so we can, so that we're, um, you know, uh, first?
Okay.
Those are the main ones, uh, from there, um, some of the other stuff, the fiscal stuff, having to determine, getting our factual information, information.
So in the, in the financial questions that Tom posed, does that answer your issues?
Yeah, that, that answered both of them all there. Um, and then how do you think we should challenge experts? Yeah, that is kind of a different one, you know, making sure that we have the information that we think is factual for our citizens, for us. We, we should please, make our decisions.
Yeah.
I don't know if that, that's a council thing where we develop it, but getting ideas certainly do that.
Mm-hmm. Lance, how about you?
Where, where you at? Okay, well, I, I guess I look at all of these as brand new questions, uh, rather than follow-ups. So I guess I had, I had a different thing in mind when we said we were gonna be follow-up questions. Um, uh, so, I mean, and I could add to the list if we're gonna go the route of new questions. But I guess my preference would be to say, look, we've got basically six, six issues here that we identified in, uh, in people's answers. And those issues being, um, the port city relationship and attracting businesses, finance, city finances that relates to city services. Um, reaching more people and determining what their, uh, what the will, will of the public is. Um, uh, issues result, revolving around budget oversight, ways to challenge experts, uh, and then identifying a, what, what a successful council would be. So those, those would be just issues that we've, that we've pulled up. So I, my preference would be to ask a series of, of follow-up questions that, that, as I said earlier, that address their answers to, uh, to what they put in the, in the application. And then maybe have that list of six things as a background list saying, we're interested in hearing your ideas on these six issues as you answer, let's say, these four or five more questions. So, um, but I don't wanna do that if that's not what Tom and Eva had in mind. Because if they're talking about having these new questions, be, I mean, you call them follow-up questions, but have them be the, the questions. Then I can just add to the list with some other questions. But my preference would be that we, we kind of zero in on what they've said already in their applications and ask them to address these five issues or six issues. So what's your thought?
I'm kinda, um, I'm, I'm open to that, I kinda like that idea, I have a problem with that actually, it's pretty good. Um, but what kind of question, what kind of a follow-up, can you give me an example of a follow-up question?
Yeah, I'll give you five. When I, I just looked, I went down this list of seven questions on the application. Um, I felt like, why are you interested in serving on city council? Um, there really wouldn't be a follow-up question to that. That's, I mean, just, that's just an opportunity to establish your interest. Um, question two was describe your vision of the Cascade Locks community for the next decade. So the follow-up question to me would be, in your application, you said your vision is blank. What is the city's role in achieving that vision? And then they would have the opportunity to address any of these issues that we specifically identified. Uh, question three was what experiences have you had with committees, boards, or commissions? And to me, a follow-up question that I think is absolutely important that we have to establish is, um, what is, um, uh, what is the city council's role in running the city and what is the city staff's role in running the city? Okay, and because I think that goes to experience with committees or boards, because typically there'll be a, a staff, uh, as well as a, as a board decision-making process. Um, and I think then that's, that's actually a pretty good opportunity to address the, you know, the budget issues, maybe the finance, as well as the, the board relationship. Um, question four was what do you see as the most critical issues facing our community? And, um, I, I think a follow-up question would be, in your application, you said the critical issues facing, facing our community are blank. And we fill in the blank for each person. And then the, the question would be what steps should the city take to resolve those? Or in some cases, people just have one issue, those are that issue. Okay? Um, there was, question five was have you ever served as an elected official before? I don't really see a follow-up to that, it's either a yes or no. Um, for question six, what ideas do you have to help us work together for the benefit of the community? Um, my follow-up to that was how should the council handle conflict? Both internal conflict as well as external conflict? And I think that's, that's kind of an opportunity to talk about, um, you know, maybe the, the challenging expert's idea, or more specifically, what's a successful city council? Um, uh, and, and that, yeah, citizen involvement might come into that, into that, their answer there as well. Um, and then, uh, the last question on the application was what skills and ideas do you have that would help us move out of the situation we are in? Um, and we got a lot of good answers to that, but I, I thought a, a follow-up to that would be, uh, because of, and, and as Tom said, we did get some kind of general answers to that. I think a follow-up to that would be what needs to happen in the next twelve months? Uh, what, what, what does the city council need to do? What does the city, what progress does the city need to make in the next twelve months? Cause for at least most of these, um, applicants, they're gonna be serving for the next twelve months and, and zero in on, on, on those short-term ideas for solutions. So, so to me, those are, those are follow-up questions that specifically relate, give them a chance to, you know, tie back to their application. And then we also have six issues that we'd like, you know, that are, are natural, gonna, gonna come out of those discussions. So I, I look at that as a more of a, a more productive way.
So what you're suggesting is these are not follow-up and they're really supplemental?
Uh, the, to me, these are, mo, I mean, most of these aren't really even questioned so much as just opinions or, you know, it sits, sat in the form of, of questions.
Right, yeah.
But they identify issues that we'd like people to, um, to address specifically.
So, yeah, what I was gonna suggest is if you call these supplemental questions and then go to your list and just, just outline the rough categories of your follow-up questions, then you would actually have both, you would have specific follow-up questions. And then you could actually pers, for the individuals you interview, you could actually pursue these other ideas.
Well, I guess I would look at it as they could either choose to, to answer them or not answer them, but that would be up to them as they, as they get the opportunity.
Yeah, yeah.
And they have their own examples of actual, like, real-life, you know, issues that they're willing to.
So Tom, does that make sense to you?
Uh, do we all have to do one more time?
The whole thing?
I think basically what Lance has.
Yeah, at a, at a place, if the jack tackle is just that, uh, for, for, yeah.
Let me see if I get this right.
I had the follow-up questions, but I just wondered how, what, 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 we, we, we kind of talked about that a little bit, um, where we can head with that one. So where were you coming out of, what were you coming out of on that?
Sure, um, I, the way I looked at it was you, you identified five or six basic issues. The port city relationship and attracting businesses, finances that relates to providing city services, uh, ways to reach more people, determine some input, um, budget oversight, uh, challenging experts, and identifying a successful city council. And, um, so to me, those are issues that we would like to, to hear more from. So we can just say as, as, as we release these interview questions, we could say, these are issues we're interested in hearing more about. And then when we get to the actual interviews, we can ask follow-up questions that start with the application and allow them the opportunity to address those issues in, more in depth. Does that make sense, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so both, both of these things would be together, they, they're gonna see both of these things and they only use one, um, as a specific along with, um, the follow-up question. Did, do you have specifics in the questions they've already, or how they've already answered their questions?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, that's good.
So you can either work off of those questions on the application, you wouldn't have to write those down, because those are the follow-ups. And then you can have these as supplementals.
I, I guess I'm not looking at these as supplemental so much as these are a list of issues that we would like to hear more about.
Okay.
So these are the questions that you can expand upon it with all of these, in these different areas.
Yeah.
So it gives more than just one generic area, it gives them the opportunity to talk about how that, how they can expand upon that involving, you know, the budget or, you know, it's a place for them to refer back to, for them to broaden their answer. And I think it would be a good idea to have those things up so that people can see them and be able to add their, you know, under pressure, being able to reference that. Don't mind them, it doesn't mean.
Yeah, we could, we could do that.
Or, or if there's an interview question sheet.
Well, they should, they should, yeah, we should already get a bill, like, we're gonna go pay with this, we should shoot that right now, too.
Yeah, yeah, they should all have it.
I, I guess what I was thinking is we set, we, we'd have an interview sheet, usually when you do a job interview or, or this type of interview, you have your list of questions and that's available, sometimes it's just available when you get there, but I like the idea of having it available once we make our decision tonight. Um, and so part of that would be, you know, at the top, we say these are the issues we'd like to, to hear more about. And then here are the questions we will be asking, it'll be five of them.
Is that agreeable to you, Tom?
Yeah.
Eva? So those questions then, Lance, are, oh, good.
Tom, did you say something?
I, I, I was gonna say, though, too, it's, um, at, during the interview, these are some of the questions that are all over your side. We may, because you're aware of that, cause we followed on that, we, we may also press you a little bit on, on some of those questions. Just wanna say we got a big list, we've got a big, big poll of something here. We just think, we'd like to see them, but they may or may not hold true on those, but we may wanna ask them some questions on that, even though they may not, they may not bring up as part of their, um, um, their topic on that.
My understanding from Alice was that she wanted the same questions to ask to every single person, correct?
Right.
Can we add any questions on the fly then? Or do you want to add?
I wouldn't be saying that to the question number five, I'd be saying, these are some of the things that they will want to know about. If they didn't, if, if they didn't expand on that, we may be able to ask for that, expand on that, if they knew, if it was out there.
Yeah, the concept is you have basic questions that everybody gets asked. But Brad Larrang may make a statement, picking on Brad, that makes you have a question that just pops up and you wanna ask him about. But the idea is you gotta have the, you have to have those basic questions that everybody gets asked. Each candidate will say things that may trigger a fi, a, uh, supplemental question on your part that you want some clarification about.
Yes.
Clarifying questions.
Yeah, yeah.
So Eva, what you're, I, if I understand what you're asking though, is if we were to do it that way and you have, um, you know, let's say you have three people go through, we ask the questions, no follow-up questions, but then the fourth and fifth person come through and all of a sudden they're getting grilled left and right. Is that a fair and open process to, to not ask the same grilling questions?
Right.
Of the first three as the last two or whatever it is? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that's kind of what I.
And, and so, and, yeah, and I, my, my sense is if we're gonna ask follow-up questions, we oughta be asking those same follow-up questions to all the candidates. And I think that's what makes, that's part of what makes this a fair and open process.
Right.
Is that everyone has the opportunity to ask, answer the same questions.
Well, we have a lot of control on it, and if that's what we're gonna do then, I'm fine with your, what's, what's over telling with yours, but then I want all of the, the questions that I had. And I want, I don't want them to be dropped out there saying, um, oh, I just wanna talk about that one, or that one, or that one. I think that they should answer all of those things too.
Well, could we do it in a, in another, a little bit of a different way? When we define the sheet and we put in there, these are, these are our follow-up questions and we want you to touch on these others, um, the, well, wanting to know more definite information about this. It gives them the direction and the opportunity to do it. If they don't do it, then that's a choice that they make, and we can't hold everybody's hand.
Okay.
But we, if we define it, we give clear instructions, you know, hey? And at the very end, we make sure and say, is there anything that you wanna expand on? You know, if we forgot something or, you know, something like that.
Okay.
Lance, how about you? Does that work for you?
The way I look at it is if you give a person the opportunity to answer a question, they choose not to, they've given you their answer.
Right, right.
I don't think you have to grill them on it. They don't, they don't, if they leave that, if they leave something out, then they, that's part of their answer.
Right.
But to be fair, we should make sure that they understand, you know, we, we want you to discuss these points.
So these items on these three sheets are gonna be the list of issues you want to hear more about. And that puts you then, that puts you then, Tom, where you need to identify what are, what are gonna be the follow-up questions or categories. Is that where you wanna go?
And I thought that the ones that you came up with were pretty, uh, simple, Lance, the ones that follow-up ones you came? So there was five, five of them?
There were five of them, yeah.
Five of them? What do you think, Tom? Did you like the questions that I had? Uh, I was gonna.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna settle off, settle off too, and, and give them time to roll all over and, and check them out, yeah, I think that's, that's appropriate.
Sir, do you wanna write those down?
Do you wanna do those right now?
Is that, okay.
Now, these are the follow-up questions. Okay, go ahead.
In your application, you said your vision for Cascade Locks in the next decade is?
Not as fast as it's.
Okay, yeah.
Your vision for Cascade Locks?
In the next decade.
I'll clean this up, come on.
Sure. The next decade is, and then blank, and we reference their application at that point.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then what is the city's role in achieving that vision?
And this is a reference to their app.
And, and specifically question two in that. Much, I don't know how much, okay.
So that would be the first one.
Next follow-up question. What is the role of city council in running the city and what is the role of city staff in running the city? Okay, and, uh, third question. That's actually referencing, um, not specifically, but it, it's a follow-up to question three. What experiences have you had with committees, boards, or commissions? But since some people have not had experience with committees, boards, or commissions, I thought that was a-
Right, good.
Because you could still have an understanding of what the role of a commission is. Um, so, third question was, um, in your application, you said the most critical? Issue, or some people just have one issue, issue or issues, okay? Are, or is, or blank. And reference question four in the application. And a blank. What steps should the city take to resolve those or that issue?
Okay.
Okay, uh, fourth question, how should the city council handle conflict? And two parts to that question, internal conflict and meaning between city council members and external conflict.
Does that re- that doesn't relate to any other question?
It, well, it, it does, I, to me, it relates to question six.
Number six.
What ideas do you have to help us work together?
And the last one?
Uh, last one, what needs to happen in the next twelve months? The city government of Cascade Locks. And I, I'm actually okay with just those five questions, particularly when we have the other six issues identified upfront. Um, there was, there's also a suggestion that you could ask a question like, uh, what else would you like us to know? But, I mean, I think, I think, you know, with five questions and eleven interviews, that's, that's actually a pretty good.
Right. Eva, is that good for you?
Yeah, I like that idea, I really like that idea of referencing, you know, having those simple questions and referencing, I like it.
Lance, is there a reference for number five?
Seven.
Tom, does that work for you?
Uh, thank you, so, so we're doing, we got, um, the question that Lance has here to follow up on those.
Mm-hmm.
And the questions I had are, are supplemental, we'll go along with that, correct?
Right, they will be in a category called, uh, list of issues you want to hear more about from the applicant.
Okay, yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Well, you did good work. Kathy, anything else that they need to do tonight?
We should be, we should decide on a format for asking the questions. So is it one person asking all the questions, are we rotating between the three of us? What format do we want? This'll be five questions.
If, if we're doing that Wednesday, you know, I want me to, I'll just listen in and see how it goes, but, um, I'll let you, they're probably not gonna do it. I don't know how long you'll pick me up there. I'll let you guys ask questions, I'll listen.
So Tom, you're suggesting on Wednesday night they rotate the questions between Eva and Lance?
Yeah, that's fine.
And the other suggestion would be that, that Paul just asks the questions and rotates between Kathy and Paul.
So, I don't, you know, for me, I don't think it's making a difference.
Yeah, I, I think you people should ask, ask the questions, unless you want to, you wanna ask the questions.
Thank you. I'll be writing answers.
Maybe we do that.
And then on Monday, then you'd rotate the questions between the three of you.
Unless there, unless that would be seen as not following the same process for each candidate.
I can't see it being a problem, when you're asking the questions, yeah, I think that we could do it. It would be good, if we're asking the board, you know, we have so-
Right, right. I, I think most people would understand the reality of situations.
And so then on both days, we would be, um, we'd be asking, but we can't mandate that the candidates wait somewhere else during the interviews.
Right.
Uh, where would that be?
Well, it's supposed to-
They can either meet in the library, or they can wait in the library, or it's probably the best place, I guess.
I agree, the most comfortable venue.
Read a book.
Do we have a key to the library?
She can keep it for the record.
The answer key.
So applicants are waiting in the library and then you'll have one person that-
Unless they decide they wanna be in here. They could.
Yeah.
Because it's an open meeting. But we'd be asking them to wait in the library.
Right. And then we'll, we'll put a table up here in the middle and move the podium out of the way, so.
And then what is your suggestion for who all should be here on Wednesday? We have to see if Gail is available, since she'll be out, but-
I would give people the option, you know, because it's, it's easier than, you know, if Gail's all alone, we'll have to come out last day, then let Gail be the only person. If, um, you know, there's two or three people at one time, it's a good choice.
Uh, is that gonna, is that gonna work, are you gonna be able to call all, all eleven people tomorrow to find out?
As long as they gave us good phone numbers, I guess, again.
Or we can just sit down, I don't care, why am I here for many?
Well, I think everyone should have the option-
Right.
-to, to meet on Wednesday. If, uh, if they choose to.
So you'll either do five or six on Wednesday and then the balance on Monday. Anything else, Kathy, the council needs to do tonight?
I have a question, um, so if we start making selections on Monday, if we could start on Monday, correct? Or are we gonna, is that gonna be on the other day?
Well, you want it, you have all the interviews out of the way, so that would happen on the twenty-fourth. So after the interviews, you could sit and make some recommendations, and I'm assuming they would have to have, in order to take action, have to come back on the Tuesday night or some other night, unless we were to advertise for the twenty-fourth, that that action would occur.
They could do that, they can advertise that that's what they're going to do, they could do it, and then, then they need to decide. I mean, whoever is appointed will need to do an open office, do that at the next regular meeting, special meeting, however you wanna do that.
Another question I had is, I didn't know how we're, how we're making a final election, are we selecting, you know, are we, I was just thinking, okay, think, um, are we selecting one person to go in one position? Because like, I, it, one of them is like, little for three years long, um, there's the mayors, there's, um, and then there's, uh, you know, a couple of others that are about a year.
Well, they would only serve, they would only serve till the general election in twenty-twelve.
No, they've, I believe the charter says they finished the term.
Oh, oh, they finished the term, okay, I stand corrected, yeah.
So how that happens, you know, and how, you know, are we selecting, um, mayor, are we doing the vote with the whole council for mayor, or, you know, are we doing it in the mayor, if you see what I'm saying? Um, I don't really understand what are, where are our rights as far as that, as far as deciding what process we wanna use? I think I'll probably be in Alex's house.
I would think Kathy, I think that was something Alex covered in, at the last meeting, but I think if that's what they have to do, they have to fill it by a position for the remaining term, then you'd have to, then one position would be appointed to fill the vacant mayor's position, and then each of the other council positions.
What, I think what she said in, in the email was, specifically pointing out that one of, one of those terms is two thousand fourteen. I don't think that one of the new people, I don't think she meant necessarily that one of the new people is to be appointed mayor. I just think that because they're different, there's twelve months and then there's one to two thousand fourteen. Need to make sure that when they appoint the two thousand fourteen person, that they say, this person we're appointing to fill the term to two thousand fourteen. I'm not sure she specifically pointed out how they go about choosing the mayor position.
I don't know what our options are.
Yeah, I'll find out and let you know.
Yeah, I'd if you'd send that to, to Tom and, and I as well.
Will do.
I mean, the truth is, the charter is silent on that issue.
Well, I know, I talked with Alex about the idea of, once everybody is seated, you then could select or vote for one of you to become the mayor. That's one way to do it. The other way to do it is you take each position, we're now filling the mayor's position. Can you make that appointment, but I'll, I'll get that from her later. All right, any other questions? Well, you guys did a lot of good work tonight, thank you. We are adjourned.
Uh, Tom, do you have anything else?
Yeah, so, um, so I think, I need you to call me again and watch the family, is that fine?
Yes.
Same, same number?
What's that?
Same number?
Yeah, it might be, but, but the problem is, is everybody's the vote, should've closed it a little while ago, so they're all sitting out there waiting, just, we don't have short hour. So the generators are all out here making faces, that, you know, they're all asleep. I may, I may have you calling it the secondary number, which is the soft call, hopefully I can pick you up, you know, off of it, so. When I do that, I'll show us, but, um-
I have to.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's-
I might, um, I might give you the, I may, I checked, I opened my room up last week, thank you.
I wouldn't do that.
Maybe you, the secondary number.
Okay.
So you'll just call city hall and let them know on Wednesday?
I'll, I'll let them know one way or the other.
Sounds good.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
Goodnight.
Goodnight.